Right, I'm going to call to order this work session of the Norah County Board of Commissioners. It is November seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. And we'll start with what's on our agenda, Ms. Purdy.
Good morning. Um, I apologize, I'm not ready. If there's somebody else behind me, let's do them.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Mr. Cockrell, do you want to go first?
I would love to. Jared is.
There he is.
Is on, um, I think we want to share some recommendations from the precinct, district and boundary committee. Um, as you've already seen, the precinct recommendations, we've sent those to the state. They did go ahead and do the council and commissioner district recommendations. Jared, are you able to show those on the screen to make it?
Yeah, I can do that for a moment.
The commissioners districts will look awfully familiar because they recommended no changes. So that one shouldn't be difficult at all. It's the council district where they made some modifications.
So you should be seeing the recommended commissioner district PDF right now.
And I, and I think they, the the group did explore making the Bloomington Township District a little bit larger, but felt for the statutory wanting not to, not to cross township boundaries unless necessary. And kind of as a community neighborhood associations decided that that was not something they, that they would recommend at this time, but they did look at it and we had a real thorough discussion on that topic. I guess I would move to the council districts because I think that's where more of the, the changes. And if you notice in the current districts, there was a awful large percentage difference between council district one and, and the rest. And maybe it's important to note that with the council districts, the people in that district vote for their council district person. Whereas a commissioners, it's just who can run for the office. And so it, it's much more important from a statutory perspective, there is a, as equal as possible. A thought in the statutory for the council district as opposed to the commissioner district. So there is a, a difference in what these mean as well. And so to get it to as close to even as possible, the committee is recommending essentially putting Clear Creek Township into council district one and putting Washington Township in the council district three, which gets the percent differences of twenty-one point one at the lowest to twenty-six point one at the highest, which is awfully close to twenty-five percent all around. And so that was their recommendation for that. Again, there was a lot of discussions about, you know, where voters felt where they were most compatible with other, with other voters in their districts. We also looked a little bit at population increases. The former council district one had not, none of the areas in that. And Jared, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think any of the areas in that had experienced any population growth in the last 10 years.
Correct.
Whereas District Three, and I think District Two had, I think, or yeah, District Two and Three, I think had, and I think District Four might have a little bit, but District One was the only one that didn't. And so Clear Creek has been growing at a steady rate. And so they thought that that would help keep it from getting out of balance in the next few years, although they didn't want to use that as a major predictor of, of how they should do this. They, they also would recommend if you're going to redo the precincts, you might relook at these and, and it, when you do that as well. So. I think that's a, that's the, the gist of it. I will look at. I assume that some of the board member or committee members are on this. Hal Turner and Regina Moore are both on this and they are both two of the committee members.
Great. Um, either Regina Moore or Hal Turner, do either of you wish to make a comment? Just raise your hand on the Zoom screen. And we'll have your comments added here. And while we're waiting, comments or questions from Commissioner Jones?
Just thank you for the work you've done. I know it's been, it's kind of complex and has been pretty rushed, but I think you've done a good job.
Commissioner Giffens, comments or questions?
Well, one comment, one question. First of all, I want to thank the committee for basing these new districts on the current data that we have from the census. So I appreciate that they stuck to that and didn't sort of say, well, where do we project growth? So I think they really kept to the spirit of the law. But if there is huge growth in one area, I wanted to ask Mr. Cockrell, if, if there's huge changes in the population, can people, can these districts be redrawn prior to twenty thirty-one?
I believe they can. I think you could do it on the same schedule as, as whenever you can do reprecincting, which is pretty much every year. I guess, having gone through this process, I would not in any way recommend making this an annual event. But I, I think you have the option. If you see an imbalance, I think that is something that could be changed at any point in time.
All right. Thank you so much. Uh, looks like we have a committee member Regina Moore joining us. Do you have anything you wanted to add?
I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to participate in this process and the opportunity to watch the technology that Jared brought to the process. It was fabulous. And if we wanted something, if we mused about something, Jared would be able to produce it halfway through the meeting. It was incredible. And I, I want to reiterate what, what Mr. Cockrell said about not, not using, we did not try to predict the future. We did not look at anything that would predict, oh, here's where we're going to have more, more growth. Um, and, and as you know, there, there are going to be other things that are going to be happening with possibly changes in the city with annexation. And so looking forward to that time, maybe saying, go ahead, take a look at the, the lines again in a couple of years when all that is settled. To see where, where things shake out at that point might be a good idea. So I'm glad that that you're, you're going to be able to look at precinct lines and maybe even district lines at that point. I don't think that, I don't see any problem with these. I'm very happy with the way the committee recommended this particular change and no change in the commissioner district. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. But I think that, that Mr. Cockrell really does speak very well for all the committee. He did a great job, kept us on task and summarized our, our feeling. He did a very excellent job. Good job, Jared. Good job, Jared. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Uh, let's hear from Hal Turner. Not sure. I think we might have lost him.
I have a couple more comments I'd like to make. I think the, the process from here will be to get these, these two slides on our website. And I, and then come back in the meeting in December, after Thanksgiving, the, the first meeting after Thanksgiving to kind of do maybe a formal review and approval and, and get that settled. So I think that's the process moving forward. I know that the committee has a meeting, a couple meetings still scheduled in case there's any feedback, but from their perspective in mind, without any feedback, I think that the bulk of their work is done and they're more responsive at this point as opposed to proactive.
Great. Um, Hal Turner, you had your hand raised?
Yes, I, I would just like to add my thanks to Jeff and Jared for the, the consultation work they did for us. We had everything we needed. Um, we were on a, a six month schedule squeezed down to six weeks. So the, the detail that we might have gone into on some of these changes had to be postponed so that we would be able to give you a finished product in time. We do, we fully expect to have to consider this as we look at reprecincting over the, the next 10 years. And want to thank the commissioners for giving me this appointment and the opportunity to, to the community. Thank you.
Joyce Pulling for serving on the committee. It was not easy, but you made it look easy. Um, and we really appreciate it. Um, I do have a question. So we're going to, we're going to look to put this on our agenda for December first, which is the first Wednesday in December. So folks who, who have comments can make them in advance, but can also ensure that they bring their comments to that meeting. Mr. Cockrell, I'm curious about how other ten under our current resolution, which created this committee, whether we can task them with looking ahead and determining a meeting schedule for themselves to continue their research because it sounds like they and that formity, how does that work?
Current committee and the current resolution expires, your committee on February first of next year. I think that could be amended to some point in the distant future. I think, and I also think it could just be recreated at the, at a point in time in the future as well. I think that's more a, a preference of what the commissioners wish to do. I think ways is, either way would work. Yeah, I, I would just, why I have the floor, I would just like to say it's very nice to thank Jared and I, and I think Jared deserves a lot of it, but I also would want to include Karen Wheeler. She wasn't maybe as vocal at the meetings, but she certainly was a great support.
Excellent work by everybody. And yeah, we appreciate the work that Karen Wheeler and Jared Eichmiller and of course our Jeff Cockrell did to make this all happen. It's really important work. Um, I'm wondering if we can task the committee, if we so choose at this moment to give us a recommendation at least for what needs to happen in twenty twenty-two. Would that be something that we could do?
I think you could.
Okay. Are my colleagues okay with that? Yes. Okay. So we would, we would like that to be something that they discuss in the near future. And to give us some guidance, what do they think, what did they think needs to happen in twenty twenty-two and beyond if they wish, um, in terms of review and in terms of process, if they have recommendations, they do such a great job that be, be really helpful to have their input. Right. All right. Okay. So we're all okay with having this item on our agenda December first? Good. Okay. All right. Excellent. Thank you, everyone. Anything else on this, Jeff?
Not, not on this, but I, I do have a, at least one other item I wanted to bring up.
Okay.
And probably two, um, the item that I, I had to bring up yesterday that that we were, that I was talking with Angie yesterday is I, I don't see a formal signed agreement with our financial advisor for the two thousand and, for the bond we, we just sold and will get proceeds from. So I'm wondering if you guys are comfortable with me signing the boilerplate contract that's the same as the past past 10 years for that work. And if you guys are fine with that, I will, I will go ahead and do that, but I want to make sure it came before you and you had the chance to yea or nay it, um, because it is a service contract that has to be reviewed by the board.
Okay. Do we, do we need to take a formal vote on it?
It would make me much more comfortable.
Okay, good. So what is the who is the contract with and what is the amount?
The contract is with Financial Solutions Group and it is an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand. And it was for financial advising throughout the issuance of the twenty twenty-one general obligation bond.
Okay, okay. Go ahead.
And that is that the bond proceeds, the cost of the, this and the bond council is built into the bond proceeds.
Okay. So I'm going to go ahead and make that we approve Financial Services Group with the amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars should be paid from bond proceeds for financial advice on the twenty twenty-one bond.
Second.
All right. We have a motion. We have a second. Let's see if there's any comment from the public. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen. I don't see anyone. Okay, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on this item?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
And Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Great. Um, you also have written us, uh, written out a resolution for us.
Yes.
Yes. And so this is resolution twenty twenty-one dash sixty-one for pantry two seven nine.
Yes. And I use the standard form we use for, um, that we've used for them in the past. In fact, when we have to give, we, we have over the past few years given a, a lot of support for food banks and other not-for-profits due to the COVID nineteen. Given the timeframe that was for the Thanksgiving dish, I thought it may be important and you guys may want to consider what you would like to, or if you would like to, and if so, how much, uh, support their Thanksgiving project. Uh, I did put in the, the draft ordinance, the amount she, she said she needed this morning of eighteen thousand dollars to pantry two seventy-nine. That's, I, I would hope that Angie Purdy could confirm that that amount is still available in the, to be used. I did not do that research. So I, I, I want you to know that before you do any kind of approvals.
You're all good.
Yay. All right. I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we approve a resolution of twenty twenty-one dash sixty-one to provide eighteen thousand dollars in funding for pantry two seven nine.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second and we appreciate Ms. Chavez coming today to give us the information that we needed. And let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Just raise your hand on the Zoom screen. All right. Seeing none, uh, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on resolution twenty twenty-one dash?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
And I want to thank everybody for making this happen.
Three, zero.
Good work and fast work. Uh, all right. Um, let's see what else we have. We've kind of gone all over the place on our agenda. It looks like we have Becca Strider from regarding the twenty twenty-two Department of Corrections Community Corrections Grant Contract. Good morning. You are muted.
Sorry. Good morning. Um, thank you for squeezing me in. Um, the twenty, so for twenty twenty-two, this will be our thirty-ninth year of receiving grant funds from the Department of Corrections. So we're, uh, Department of Corrections. So we're excited to continue that tradition. The Department of Correction, they provide funding for four different community corrections programs in our county. That includes our community corrections program, drug court, mental health court and pre-trial. A few highlights of the twenty twenty-two grant. The biggest is that this year or for next year, Department of Correction awarded us a grant increase of just over a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars more than we've received last year. And that's actually one of the biggest increases we've received over the course of the years that we've been partnering with the Department of Correction. So with this increase, we're able to not only continue to fund existing positions, but we were also able, excuse me, to apply more grant funding to staff salaries and benefits to help relieve some of our project income. And then we also were able to create a new position called Evidence-Based Practices Training Coordinator. And it's our hope that this position will coordinate all our training, coaching and continuous quality improvement efforts as our staff are trained in evidence-based practices to help our clients make positive life changes in both their, both their thinking and their behaviors. So if I could just real quick highlight the four different grants. So the first grant is community corrections. This funds our home detention electronic monitoring programs, day and day reporting. Our second grant is our pre-trial services grant or pre-trial services program. As you'll recall, in twenty sixteen, Monroe County was one of eleven pilot program sites that started a pre-trial program. I'm happy to say that as of April of this year, we were formally certified by the state of Indiana, which means our pre-trial program applies best practices and where our certification is good for three years. Our third grant entity is Drug Treatment Court led by Judge Mary Ellen Decoff. Our Drug Treatment Court is in its twenty-second year here. And at the beginning of November, it had its four hundred and ninety-first graduates. And then our mental health court is the last grant funded entity in our community corrections grant. It's in its seventh year, also led by Judge Decoff. And the beginning of November, it has had twenty-one graduates over the course of its life. So we're very excited to continue to have this amazing funding from the Department of Correction to fund staff and programs. And as always, on behalf of probation, community corrections, we're so grateful for the commissioner's support of all that we do.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Um, my colleagues have any comments or any questions?
Yeah, I, I was wondering if this money, congratulations. And I know probation and community corrections have done really well with grants. Ask if this would maybe allow the hours for the pre-trial diversion to be expanded.
That's not specifically included in this grant. Um, that is always something that we are looking to do and have conversations about. In this grant, it did not fund any additional pre-trial positions, which would be something that we would need to look at if we were to expand hours. It's always on a wishlist item though.
Okay, thank you.
So is this an item that you're going to bring next week? Um, I'm not sure. I spoke with, or Linda Brady, our chief spoke with Angie and she said we could possibly do this through this work session.
Yeah, and I had a copy on that. Um, since this is an ongoing grant and receiving for thirty-nine years, we thought that it could be handled at this public meeting, but if Jeff is still on, if he could confirm that statement.
I think it's perfectly acceptable to do that at this meeting and it follows kind of our, the guidance we've, we've always followed, which is if this is something that has been a long-term commitment or a, not a new item, then that is appropriate for approval at a work session.
Okay, great. Uh, is one of my colleagues want to make a motion?
I'm not sure what to say.
I, I'm not, I, I don't have. Okay, uh, I'm just going to make a motion that we continue of, uh, and renew, approve the renewal of the twenty twenty-two Department of Corrections Community Corrections Grant Contract.
Second.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Your hand on the Zoom screen. All right. Seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on, uh, the renewal of the twenty twenty-two Department of Corrections?
Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Appreciate you. All right. Um, Ms. Purdy, you have another item, please.
I do. Thank you very much. Um, this is just requesting the ratification of the approval of, it's a AI document, A one zero one dash two zero one seven. It's a standard form of agreement between owner and contractor. We tend to see these, or at least I noticed these most associated with engineering firms, um, when they and this is for the work that's being done on the Alexander Memorial on our courthouse lawn. And this will just allow them to start the project. It has a due date of, I believe, June sixteenth, in which the work is supposed to be completed by next year. Correct?
Okay. Um, I have a quick question. About this, it's called a ratification on our agenda.
Yeah, this is the one that I had reached out to you, um, because the group that is doing the work with needing this to be done and get out to the contractor as soon as possible. And so I reached out to you and Mr. Cockrell and you said it was okay and approve it. And so, um, because this is more of a housekeeping item, the contracts have already been through. This is just additional form that the engineer tends to provide to us.
And I would, I would augment that with, this is the agreement that's included in the bid documents.
Right.
So it's already been reviewed for, for a while. The only thing that's changed is the name and the, the bid amount.
Right. Excellent. Okay. Good, good. I just wanted to make sure I understood where we were at on this and what we had to do. So this is something where we need a, a formal vote, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we ratify the Alexander Memorial Restoration Agreement.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and we have a second. Uh, let's see if there's any, um, public comments on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen. Okay, seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the ratification of the Alexander Memorial Restoration Agreement?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three, zero.
Great. Thank you so much. Did you have anything else for us, Ms. Purdy?
I do not. Thank you very much.
All right. Um, we have last on our agenda, um, discussion about election central space needs, although we're meeting today, so I'm not sure. What we're doing here. So, uh, does somebody wish to speak from the election board?
Hi, this is Shruti. Yeah. So I wanted to pose questions, um, and you know, to continue our dialogue. And you know, if you want to answer them now or in the meeting, I think either one is fine. So, and I have to be brief as well because I have to go to another meeting in a few minutes. But thank you again. And so let me just start by posing the questions. So the first directly in response to yours is, so which forum would you feel most comfortable answering the clerk and So the first directly in response to yours is, so which forum would you feel most comfortable answering the clerk and election boards? Questions or the questions that we've posed to you? That's because we need those answers to prepare our next presentation. And then to follow that, when would it be, when should we anticipate a response again for planning purposes? So when should we anticipate a response from the board to our questions? Then we had discussed a number of times that we felt that goalposts had been moving and that there was backtracking. So we wanted confirmation on where you stood with respect to various plans. And for example, I think the clerk had submitted a, submitted documentation for you, to you of the square footage that we were looking at. And he'd wanted it resent with cubic feet instead of square feet. And I wanted to raise the question before we get to multiplication that we start to. And the addition question is, we want to make sure that, you know, as the clerk has pointed out a number of times, we wanted to make sure that if election central were expanded to the whole first floor. That there would be multiple entrances and exits, or we can call them ingress and egress, but definitely multiple spots. So I wanted to make sure that everyone was clear that it was more than one. You understood that and had received that information. Also, similar question about COVID, social distancing needs had come up many times and we wanted to make sure it was clear that the distancing needs were for. Outstanding in line. So therefore, if, as we all hope, the pandemic recedes or even better ends, that the, that does not change the requirements for space inside. Those needs won't be reduced. Then earlier I had just requested a clarify, that the commissioners clarify your position with respect to clerk bounds proposals to expand central, to expand election central. And my other question had been if you're proposing or suggesting that early voting take place in a location other than election central, to please explain where and why. So those were the questions and I don't know if you want to talk about them now or this afternoon or whatever makes sense to you.
It seems like this afternoon would make more sense since that's what we're doing at 4:15 and you're also pressed for time. And I appreciate you standing by today.
I'd like to have those mail to email to us rather than trying to take notes on all this.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I need some, yes. And so, yeah, if you could email us the question, because, because you said you had questions that you wanted us to address. And then you talked about. You noted two questions relating to plans and square footage and COVID, but were there others?
Yeah, so I have.
We would like those sent. Yeah.
I have everything I just asked in bullet points, so I can type into sentences and send it to you in the next couple of.
Bullet points is fine. I didn't know if there were others in addition. Other questions in addition. If there are, please send those because we don't, we don't have them. And we don't have. We have how you would take, from the election board, we have how you would take Johnson Hardware and divide it up at that. But we need, actually we need the report that says, here's the square footage we need for each function. And that's what Mr. Turner said we were going to get like two, three months ago. And we don't have that yet. And if we can get a copy of that for four o'clock, that would be great. 4:15, sorry.
Great. Sorry, good. I have a second lag on my Zoom, so I didn't mean to speak while you were speaking, so.
You're fine. You're fine.
So I was going to suggest, since the meeting's at 4:15 and I don't know, you know, the other board members' schedules. What I can do is send my bullet points that I just raised today to you right away. And then, you know, hopefully the others can add to them, but if not, we'll send each other at 4:15.
Sounds good. Great. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Appreciate you. All right. Anything else from my colleagues or other staff members, department heads? All right, great. So with that, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone, and please get vaccinated.